Salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the sea as symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Mr. Crur, would you please lead us?
Our dear Father, we're grateful to you for this beautiful day and the opportunity that we have to come together today. We ask a special blessing upon our neighbors in Ruidoso, that you will give them the things that they need in order to rebuild their town and their lives. We ask for discernment and knowledge from our commissioners today to make the decisions they have to make. And Father, we ask a special blessing of safety among our sheriffs, our detention officers, and our prior officers. Father, we're grateful for thy grace and knowledge and discernment in our lives, and these things are saying, Jesus, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. We'll go ahead and start with public comment. Do we have any public comment this morning? If you could just state your name for the record, please.
Good morning. I'm Billy Grandy, resident of Otis. The topic today we're going to talk about is about Otis Gym. And I have mixed feelings about it. I've already said before that, you know, it's part of Otis' history. It's got a lot of history and a lot of historical assets. You can't build a building that has character like that anymore. I hear it's got asbestos to send it, and by law, they say that you have to get rid of it. And if you gotta get rid of it and tear down the Otis Gym, I'm not for it, but I guess I have to abide by it. And as an Otis resident, I feel that we need a community center there. It's been a community center for many, many years, even before y'all took it on. And I feel that it should stay in the vicinity as Otis Community Center. If you have to tear it down, build a nice one where people can use it. And by God, they don't use it. Don't hold back and say, well, we can't do this, can't do that. If people want to pay and use it for a dance or whatever they want to do, you know, have that in writing. And have it where y'all are not responsible for any accidents. I understand that you're, you know, y'all worried about getting sued, this and that, and I understand that. But I just feel that it should be taken care of now. And getting rid of the asbestos, getting rid of the asbestos to keep the facility. But if you can't, build a nice one and make it available to the Otis community and the surrounding area. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy.
And I've got only three minutes.
Maybe I could give him my three. Okay, I'm James Walter Schein. I'm a resident of Otis also, or of the area, if you want to call it that. Anyway, I thank the commissioners for coming out for the tour of the gym. Appreciate y'all. All five of y'all, surprised to see John Hendry especially come all the way down there. But anyway, I thank y'all for coming and at least putting your eyes on the gym and the community. We call it the old band room, the community center of the meeting room, isn't walking through all that. But anyway, I'm really appreciative of all of y'all coming down. And even Mr. Taylor came down. I was surprised to see him. I'm not sure what his reason was, but I have a feeling what that was all about, whatever. I bet he's never seen the gym before, but now he has. But anyway. But anyway, thank y'all for coming, and I think y'all saw that it's not that bad a shape with just the physical looking at it. You know, the inside is, you know, it's a little poor and definitely needs work. But it's the stuff we can't see that evidently the county staff has gone over and gone over. And when I was on the commission, there was that facilities condition assessment that Brian Stevens started. I never saw the results of it till about two months ago. And anyway, I was surprised to see the results of that. And anyway, and I've learned a lot more since then about different aspects of it. One, some of the stuff that I still have a problem with, the county administration put together an assessment of how much things are going to cost. One is, they said that to fix it up, to renovate, it's going to cost, there's one item said landscaping, four hundred and sixty-five thousand. I talked to the manager yesterday. I said, what in the world does landscaping got to do with the gym? And evidently, there's a mistake being made by that, four hundred and sixty-five thousand for it. And that was, and I thought, that's crazy. Another one was the restrooms. The restrooms are in beautiful shape there. And they say that there's mold, but it's in the hallway. And I asked Mr. Moore, where is this mold at? He pointed up in the top of the hallway. He can't even see it. And you would expect to see mold going all the way to the floor, you know, gray color. Anyway, they wanted to do away with all the restrooms, two hundred and fourteen thousand. I don't know if that's really necessary. But anyway, the flooring, they were saying in two thousand and eighteen, they need, it's going to cost twenty-eight thousand. Now they're saying it's two hundred and ninety-six thousand. But that's to put in a brand new floor. And I don't know. Anyway, there's a number of things that I think are too high in this thing. And anyway, they kind of, what I kind of see is a new building for three point two million versus renovated for, well, they got it up to four point five million, and maybe it's really down to more like three and a half. So it's getting a bit close to the same thing. I guess I'm out of time. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your looking at it. Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all. Good morning, commissioners. Norbert Renpe, U.S. citizen and Eddie County resident. Two years and eight days ago, after almost half a century of lethal judicial error and malpractice, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled in the Dobbs decision that our federal constitution does not confer a right to murder children in the womb. But in anticipation of the court overturning its grievously wrong Roe v. Wade decision, our governor and legislative majority doubled down on the historic horrendous mistake. They rolled out the red carpet for continuous escalation of the mass slaughter that cost over twenty-one thousand human lives in New Mexico in two thousand and twenty-three alone. The real number is higher and unknown, primarily because the most common method of execution by the mother ingesting a human pesticide results in the disposal of murdered children's remains in residential and hotel toilets and sewers. Our atrocious state government that preys on children like raptors prey on bunnies welcomes murder-minded people from states that protect children in the womb, mostly Texans. To prevent child murder and abortion tourism, New Mexico towns and counties along our eastern state line enacted binding ordinances that make murder in the womb practically impossible in their communities. Strength in numbers is one among many reasons why next-tier communities such as Carlstadt and Eddie County must join the rejection of child executions. One ounce of prevention being worth a pound of cure is a time to act is now. This commission must address the peril to our and our neighbors' children head-on. Invasion, delay, and avoidance in the face of current and imminent mass murders are cowardly derelictions of duty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy.
Is there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move into item number two, Otis Gym Discussion and Direction. Mr. Verne?
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. So we, um...
That's scary.
Hard enough to get the right angle. You might as well look forward. I have a football picture right here. At the June fourth meeting, we presented a presentation of our minimum gym options, estimates, the facility reports regarding the gym. With the outcome of that, it was suggested we go take a tour. We scheduled that, and we went and did that on June fourteenth. Was it June fourteenth? It was eighteen fourteen. So with that, we will stand for direction and discussion. We do have the award for the IFB that was advertised for the county for the gym for a direction on that territory. So, I'm standing for questions. We tried to present some of the key points. We went out there and kind of showed and talked about what the plan was and some of the concerns that we had, just so we could lay eyes on it, you know. We feel they're pretty justified in the recommendation we made and to uphold the former commission's decision. We stand for direction. Just for good.
Hi. For listening to the gentleman, everybody knows my opinion. I would like to fix it. I had a conversation with you at the last commission meeting. You made a pretty good case about why we can't actually fix it. Go into that a little more. Can, is it possible to remove the asbestos and fix it? I know we can't just build false walls and encapsulate it and beef up the floor because the asbestos is still there. Explain the law regarding, as long as that asbestos is in that building, if we cannot use it for the public, I mean...
It becomes a, now we know about it. It's a liability deal that, it's like, and I hate to revert it back to this, but it's like COVID. With all the precautions we take and all the, we could do all the precautions in the world, but if something were to happen that could be traced back to that, we're going to be the ones that are at fault for that because now we know about it. And the same thing with COVID. If something were to happen, no matter if they had gotten at the grocery store, driving around, at home, if they would have been in a county facility that we knew there was a problem, it would have come back and reverted on us. Same thing with this asbestos. If something were to happen and it's traced back to us in some way, shape, form, or fashion, we would potentially be liable. So now we have to fix it. The mold, the asbestos, the code issues, the ADA. That's why we're looking at building all these new buildings instead of trying to fix them. Because it's a potential liability for us that we know it's a problem and we need to fix it. With the asbestos, the only correct way to fix it is to evade it. We go in there, yes, we can pull the asbestos off the wall. Yeah, we can remediate the mold. The real issue here is the maintenance that's going to continue to have to be done on the building. We're going to have to put a brand-new roof on it straight off the back, which is five to eight hundred thousand dollars. We're going to have to put a new HVAC system on it because those old, what'd you call them, hay collectors?
Hay shuckers.
Hay shuckers.
Hay shuckers.
Those are going to continue to cause problems. They cause rotten mold all the time. So we're going to have to update the HVAC system to something that's to code. And then if we go in there, you know, we're going to have to look at doing the floor, and we're going to have to bring in an engineer and architect to decide how the best way to fix that is. Which is probably going to be some sort of complete demo, pull that out, new pyramid, new concrete. Something. I mean, we could do anything with time and money. So it's, the real question is here today is, is it worth the investment? Is it, is it, is the investment worth what we're going to put out there? And that's what the direction and the questions we need to answer today. And it's not worth it. Maybe that's the wrong way to put it, but the facility and what we're going to put into it and what we're going to have to put into it going forward, you know, same thing with the detention center. It's going to cost more to keep the old one than it is to build a new one. So that's where we're at with Otis Gym on the property is, is the old one versus what could we do? What do we want to do? So...
I see. If you do, and there have been discussions, and anybody jump in anytime. We save the bathrooms. They can be salvaged. I hear that correct. And tie them into a new building. Is it possible to build a new building there and demolish the old one? But make the new one look like the old one, the same footprint? Kind of a deal? I mean, there's, even not the only two people concerned out here, that's...
I can do anything with time and money.
Okay.
How much money and how much time is usually the question? We can do anything with time and money. So it's, it's understanding what construction costs are today and that it would be some similar methods to what are out there. I mean, we can do precast concrete walls. We can do a structural steel roof. I mean, we can do all these things, make it look exactly the way that one does. It's going to be expensive.
We've got steel and stucco. I mean, we have all options. The only thing I'm not open to is demolish the thing and walk away from it. So...
Construction costs are high today. I mean, we're, you're seeing that with some of the bids that come in. We even have an agenda further down the agenda that you're going to see that some of these items that are, we feel are just basic simple projects are coming in a little higher than what we expect. And that's due to, you know, we're trying to design facilities for the future and also because it's the world we live in today. Everything is getting substantially more expensive very quickly. So that's why we're kind of pushing some of these other projects. We're getting exponentially more expensive every month we go down the road. So that's, yes, we can build it exactly like the old one. It's going to be expensive. I mean, it's not a far stretch to say that...
Exactly, but similar would be...
I understand what you're saying, but it wouldn't be a stretch to say if that's what your direction is as a commission, it's not going to be a five, six million dollar project. Is that investment worth the location and what it is and what we're going to use it for and the usage that it's going to get?
Well, I'm kind of like Fred. I'm not, I'm not, the only thing I'm saying is I'm not for abandoning it, tearing it down, and walking away from it. It doesn't make sense to me. We're already going to spend the money to put, what is it, a splash pad or whatever out there. We need something to go with that if we're going to do that. And so, of course, I grew up with Otis Gym. The first basketball game I ever played in was in that Otis Gym. And so that's been a while ago. So that's my deal. I think that, that maybe the economics are better at replacement than they are to rehab it just because of the problems that they have on the asbestos and stuff. But there's parts of it that can still be used even if we did a different type of structure. And so that's kind of where I'm at.
I had a lot of good discussions with folks that I've talked to, called them, asked them some questions. I think, I appreciated the conversations because there's, there's quite a few reasonable people. And when they hear the four million, even three and a half million, they were kind of shocked. To rehab a building like that, I don't, I don't see it. I do, I do agree. I mean, most of the folks I talked to, because that was my ultimate question. That was my question when I was out there. And that was a question to the folks that I actually talked to on the phone, is what is it you want? You want a gym to go play ball? Well, most of them are all, the one gentleman said, I'm seventy years old. I will never shoot a basketball again in my life, so no, I could care less. They want a place to go and do community. And I completely understand that. And what does that look like? I think that's the footprint we kind of need to understand, is what does that entail? Because making it look like it does now, I don't, I don't see how we do that, make that reasonable. But if we can make a really nice community center, if that is the direction we went, what, what does that footprint look like? I wouldn't be a big fan of keeping the bathrooms. Why put a brand-new building attached to something that has problems now? If we're going to do it, let's, let's get it right and let's put it all in there towards all fresh. There is no old, old problem. We can remediate it or whatever. Let's get a building that everyone can utilize and, and the community can utilize. Because I've heard, I heard all these stories. And I was told that I bet if you go open the door right next to the bleachers, there's probably a thousand skates still in there. So there's a lot of really cool memories, and I fully understand that. And I think that's what folks need to understand is everything we're talking about, everything Carlstadt's talking about, everything Artisia talks about, is when we're, we're changing things, and it is hard for change. You know, I was in five block two weekends ago. The football field I played on my entire life is now a school and a bus park. Is it a bummer? Well, absolutely. I love that football field. It was amazing. It was the center of our town, everything else. But the kids that are going to school here now need a new school, and that's okay. You know, things have to change because things are going, things are changing. And it's not always an easy thing to accept, and I fully understand that. But to me, I do like the idea. I've looked at and I've thought about it a lot. What does that community center look like? What does it cost on just a normal community center? If we're not trying to put back a gym, if we're not trying to put back this major huge footprint, what does that kind of look like? And I guess that's one of my sort of questions.
I agree. It seems that the biggest desire is the community center, not so much of more recreation facility. I thought that the community building wasn't very rich when we walked in there. It reminded me very much of my family's community center that we use every year for family reunions in Logan, New Mexico. And in fact, it was much nicer and spacious. My first thought going over there was obviously, and maybe it's just the nurse and me, but I worry about exposure to chemicals in a building like that that's known to have asbestos and mold. It's just not something that we can, that we can stray from. It has to be handled. It will be costly to take it down, remove it, pay a company to do that. And I just don't know if I would ever be satisfied that it would be safe for people. The other thing that was clear to me is the grounds are so nice. There's space for, you know, I had a discussion with Mr. Moore about, you know, putting a backstop and grading a section of the grounds for a baseball field, a softball field, people to use for practice, it can be used for soccer, and also remodeling the basketball court that exists there outside. So I think that there's so much opportunity to, you know, work this space that's there. I also had the thought, there was conversations about the water in Otis and how difficult that might be to utilize for a splash pad. The other thing, you know, I am not as well-versed in the history of the Otis Gym, but I have been there. And what was very apparent to me is the landscape around the property is much different now. It's commercial. There's semis everywhere. There's dirt everywhere. There's hardly any shade. And I was thinking for my own children, if I, would this be the place I would want to come to take my kids to a splash pad? I don't know. Probably not because of those reasons. I think it's going to be a huge undertaking for the county to keep that clean, to keep it, the chemicals correct on it. I had the idea of questioning, does the splash pad that the state has allocated money to, does it have to go there? We have other parks and other places in Eddie County that I think it could be well-served. I had the thought of Happy Valley Park. We're remodeling that. We have done a lot of work to that. In my opinion, that seems like the more justified place for it is a community place. There's kids in the neighborhood. There's trees. There's shade. And the water system is better than what's available on Otis. That being said, I don't want to take the possibility of a community center away. I think if anything, we could look into expanding the existing or just utilizing what is, is there. People should come and look at that. It's clean. It's nice. It's cool. The bathrooms are clean. I feel like there's enough space for that. I feel like there could even be basketball courts in that place. So that, those are just my thoughts. As I said, I, I don't feel that I would ever be satisfied with the existing structure being saved knowing all of, what's undetermined, you know, to be there. And if we're trying to be fiscally responsible, I feel like this is four million dollars that could go into remodeling the courthouse, is how I feel. So...
Definitely, everybody, the community center seems to be the thing that I have heard is most of what's out there. It's where people are going together. There already is a community center there. My, my big questions are, who uses it? How many people are using it? How often and for what? The gym has been decommissioned since two thousand and nineteen, correct?
Yes.
So for five years, it's empty and vacant. And maybe there's been a lot of complaints, but, but me personally, I have not received anything about that building being empty and decommissioned. I completely can appreciate and understand the history and the memories and the sentiment that the attachment that people have to the community centers. We all get attached to things that, that are impactful to us as we grow up. But what purpose does the gym serve as it stands if we were to remodel it? What purpose does the new one serve if we put a new one out there? How many people does it serve? How often will it be used? All of these questions are different. If we're looking to have a place where the community, again, like I, like I said, there's the community center that's there that's standing. As Commissioner Cordova mentioned, sprucing up the, the grounds around it, making that available for youth soccer teams, baseball teams, for people again, the Otis-loving mountain areas to use as closer to home for them. I can really see that. I can, that's something I could really be buying. But I, I've said it before and I'll say it again, four million dollars for something that less than one percent of the county's population uses is very hard for you to run and remember.
You know, the one thing that I would inject at this point on that is the fastest-growing area in, in all of, probably all of Eddie County is the Martin Farms Otis area because it's where everything's moving to the south because there is really no easy way to move anything further north because we're limited as to accessibility and progress going north. So all the building is happening in the Otis area. We've got Martin Farms. We've got the guy from Los Cruces, all of them have put in new subdivisions in there. And they're just building more and more of them. And so the growth is going to go south in, in the Otis and south towards the airport. And so when you're talking about a better-placed facility, there is no better-placed facility than where the growth is, and that's where the growth is at in Carlstadt. My call.
If I can ask a question, because then that goes to another question that... If I can ask a question, cause then that goes to another question that, that was asked me, and I don't know the answer to this, I don't know if we know the answer to this, but one gentleman made a great point, he said he'd always hoped that maybe the school would take it back, and at some point, put a school there because of the growth. Is that reasonable?
Well, it's not big enough, John, the problem is the area is not big enough for what the schools that they're building right now.
How many acres is it acre?
I think the board is, it's like five, it's, um, it's six, it's about five acres.
Cause I know we're looking at schools down there, six acres seems to be the, the bit for those, and so just out of curiosity.
I, I don't know, I'm just looking at what they, they're, they're putting in, you know, the superintendent of schools, they're building a new school over off of, uh, Old Caveron Highway, and, and it's going to be really big.
Right.
And so I'm just saying that, you know, it looks like they, they had, they had bought that one property across on Boyd Drive, and it was like fifty acres.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm, I'm just wondering if it's large enough, and if you go look at Opatito and, and those places, they're a lot bigger than the property that's there at Otis. Not saying they couldn't, maybe five.
No, but I, I would just ask them a question, cause that's what their desire was, and, and I know it's not a fifty acre school, except the high school in Artisia, but most elementary, because obviously they're a lot smaller, I just, I'm wondering if that fits, maybe it does.
It's four point five.
Kind of, you know, it's, it's, it's not a big relevant point at the moment for me, but, but I know that was one of the desires, and I'll ask the question, and it's over here on a master.
Especially since they're now consolidating all of the, the elementary school.
So if that's not ever gonna be, be a possibility, then yet, the changes, obviously, never use, they're not gonna want that.
So we've got a lot of different, a lot of different ideas, what's our direction with this?
Well, to your point though, to both of y'all's points, with the current building, if we were to do some, what do we do with it? I mean, it's actually in really good shape, we just spent money fixing it up, the grounds are much better, I mean, walking with it was, it was a nice little building, but if we were to put a community center there, what is that? Is that just gonna become a wasted building?
Is that not the community center, does it sit down?
But then that's, I guess, I guess that's the question, is what?
Yes.
Understanding is that was the community center. And the gym is just a gym.
And shade adding things where it is available to be used as a park, as a practice facility.
And to be clear, we are not discussing closing the community center in any way, we're not demolishing it, we're not closing it, it will still be available, it will still be a voting site, correct?
Correct, and that's what it's currently being used for.
But it's really not the size that you need for a community center. When you go in there and, and look at, at the space in there, I mean, I held the, uh, county hall meeting up there when we were talking about cannabis, and, um, it really wasn't large enough to hold something like that.
What's the possibility of expanding that way?
Do anything, time and money.
Are you having, are you having like four million dollars to do something like that?
We'd have to look into it and see what, what it would look like, what the shape would be, what it'd actually cost. It probably wouldn't be the two and four million dollars, um, but we, we'd really have to look at it and see if it would be plausible or, or make sense.
And I'm not trying to kick the can, and I'm not trying to waste anyone's time, but if it's community, we have a building there with obviously good bones and structure, not with the problems with the courthouse.
I think the, and this is just my suggestion to the commission, and, and with the, not to kick the can down, but we're gonna need a decision on if we tear the building down today, yes or no? Um, and, and maybe the right answer is kinda like what we're doing with some of these others, we bring you some grounds away, we work with Trent, kinda see where things are gonna fall, basketball courts, and then bring you some different options. Um, does a covered shade work there for the area that you need? What would the actual cost be of a metal building of that kind of size to, to bring it in?
I think that we would like to, I mean, I would like to see all of that, all those options and, and kind of a, a plan as to what we would do.
I, I would agree with Commissioner Carlson there, I think that before we can make a decision on whether or not we demo the gym, having a, having a proposal, having something, a conceptual design for all of us to look out for the community to see of what's going to take its place, because if we, we're, we're all close, but we're still far enough apart to where I don't think it's united here. So if we were to tear down the gym, it could sit there, uh, torn down with no plan going forward, and, and I don't think that's fair to the, the oldest residents that have showed up to the meetings. Uh, I also don't think it's the right responsibility for the community without having something options way out for us to, to look at going forward, I don't think that we should move forward with the decision to demo.
And I would like to vote, one more thing, I, I'm sure, I understand that you probably didn't get any calls, and probably you did, Josh, but that is my district, and, and I can assure you that I've gotten a lot of calls, and I think the press has taken some calls. You know, because they, they know the press right there by me, and I assure you that I take calls, and I, and I see those day, people almost daily, and everyone has a comment about it.
No.
And, and most of them would talk about, well, you know, we did this, we used it, and I've had a lot of the people in Loving that had talked about that they've used it for like wedding receptions and stuff, and that, that they're, you know, they miss having that, and that's what I said back in two thousand nineteen, when we voted to decommission it. I had the same talk, well, you know, with the residents in my district, that hasn't changed. They're, they're, they come with the same, the same comments that, that I was getting back in two thousand nineteen. They wanna see something there. Now, they're not, uh, to be honest with you, they're not that interested in a splash pad. I think that, I think that the guys that are here will verify that, that they're not that interested in splash pads, but they are interested in having a community type center that they could utilize there, it's big enough for them to have wedding receptions and that kind of thing.
Well, everybody here has had something to say that I agree with. Um, I, you know, but, but I think I, the last thing I said, the only thing I don't agree with is tearing the thing down and walking away from it. I like, very much like the idea of maybe, uh, sports complex, kind of, if you're gonna have a sports complex, why wouldn't you have a gym to go with baseball fields and the football fields, uh, with, with some public resters? Um, I think a splash pad is just out of the question.
But, but I love like, also, love what Jason was saying about a conceptual drawing or plan that we can all look at and, and see where, what that might look like, and where it might go, I think that's.
So, so with that, we'll take that direction, but Cass, county manager, with, with this bid that we have, do we, can we just cancel that, or do they need to vote to not award that? What would be our direction on that?
That would be my suggestion is to cancel it.
Just to cancel it.
Just to cancel, cause you're holding that vendor out there, and holding that price out there for, and making.
Well, if we, I think if the consent is in, the building's gotta go, so i- if we cancel, if we cut a contract with.
It, we can't hold them out there for such a long period of time, and we've already kind of been stretching it out. So like county manager suggested, either cancel it or do away with it, and then we rebid it at the appropriate time with the press goal line, is what we would do. And re procure, so I think that's fine, uh, once we have the, the plan.
I mean, but I would like a timeline, um, cause I, as far as I'm concerned, what you just said is right, I mean, I don't know that anyone up here is disagreeing with the gym's gotta go. Right. Um, unfortunately, it's, it's four and a half million dollars, so we're probably not looking at a gym. What, what timeline are we looking for? And, and there's two things I'm gonna say, what kind of timeline are we looking to bring these proposals back, number one? Number two, if, if nobody wants a splash pad out there, and I, I would assume, because typically that capital outlay is written fairly specific, I'm sure that there's gonna be enough wiggle room to move it to Apple Valley, I lack the idea, but I'm not sure there is. So basically, what we're telling everybody is, again, Otis, some of the residents don't want it, so we're gonna just call the state and say, well, we're gonna give you your money back, spend it somewhere else. Is that how that's gonna go, because, or are we able to?
The splash pad can't be moved, the language in there says Eddie County, it does not specifically say.
Okay, that's super helpful.
As long as it did say Eddie County.
As long as it doesn't say going to Otis, I really love that language, because it's, if it's broad enough that we can move it around, cause I don't wanna, I, my point is, I don't wanna call the state and say, we'll have it back, we don't need it, because anytime they give us money, I wanna make sure Eddie County residents, um,
Benefit.
Benefit, and so if, 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 depending on how that's written, if we can move it, I'm all for that, um, piece, but I'm, I have a hard time if it's not that way, saying, take your money back and use it somewhere else.
I think we'd need to bring that back in another agenda item for a decision on that, or can they discuss that now?
The splash pad, that could be in a, a separate one, or, I mean, that could be made now, but that's not what's on the agenda, so I would say.
Yeah, I'm not asking to make a decision on that, I'm just, that, that keeps being brought, being brought up that we don't want it, notice, and that's, I'm okay with that. But depending on how that is written, is I'm very curious of how that's written, so if it is written in such a way, it's just Eddie County?
Yes.
Then let's move it, and let's, you know, there's plenty of other locations we can bring that back, but it kind of fits in with what we're talking about, because it's the direction we're gonna go with that Otis area of is how, what are we trying to get upon?
Um, okay, as far as timeline on the proposals? Soon, soon, and let's go with soon, no, it, it's gonna take us a minute to get someone on board, to, and, and we have folks ready to go, but to get them here, and let's get something that looks right, to get some plans, to get some conceptuals, I mean, we're, we're, we're looking at a little bit of a process here, so if.
Thirty days, we're talking.
Sure.
No, thirty day mark, yeah, I already tell you.
It's relative.
Unless you, here, I've got a pen, I've got.
You're, you're looking at probably at least about three months, at least.
Decent, it's, it's gonna be first of the year. It's just by the time we get them, and, cause you're also wanting estimates, and some conceptual drawings, to get that level of what we're looking at, decent. Um, yeah.
Thirty days.
Come on, man.
I thought I mean, or fifteen.
Yeah, this commission may not be making that decision.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
So I guess that's the direction.
There's not a vote, so, but we'll need a vote.
For this, uh, somewhere.
Okay, next we'll move into IFB twenty four oh one Otis Gym demolition. Ms. Tanya?
Morning. Um.
So, maybe I could start this one before Ms. Tanya, th- this would be the one that we're making a recommendation to cancel, correct? So she would, yeah.
So there was one working, um, there was only one bid. Sorry. I went blank, I'm sorry.
I guess we'll make this one, we, we, I make the motion that IFB twenty four dash oh one Otis Gym demolition be canceled.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Renova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
I said. Commissioner?
Next is RFP twenty four oh six Detention Center Formal Spiritual Services.
There you go, it's time.
So, um, sorry, I was just thinking about the previous one, but, um, for this one, we did, uh, receive four submissions. Um, the one that scored the highest was the advanced medication management system, so based on those programs system, that's the one that's, we're recommending to award.
Questions?
Yours, that works for you?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
You're the local vendor, we've used them for years, and fantastic.
I'll make a motion that we get to accept that.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Renova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Exit RFP twenty four oh seven Professional Engineering Services for landfill designing companies.
So for that one, we did receive two submissions, um, and again, the one that scored the ha- the highest was the Southern Millar and Associates, and we are recommending them for the award.
Look for a motion to approve RFP twenty four dash oh seven.
Shall we?
Yes.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Renova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll move into our trailing agenda, the first item we have is to approve commission meeting minutes for June fourteenth, twenty twenty four special meeting.
Are there anything that need to be pulled or discussed further? So, no, I'll look for a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for June fourteenth, twenty twenty four, discussion. Motion in a second, please call for the votes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Renova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Commission meeting minutes for June eighteenth, twenty twenty four.
Any questions, if they are moved for further discussion? So we're gonna work for a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for June eighteenth, twenty twenty four.
Go move. Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Renova?
Yes.
Carlson?
I'm starting.
Beard?
Yes.
Next we have our treasurer's report for May twenty twenty four, this was already dispersed to all of you, so it's just FYI, FYI only, unless you have any questions. Next we have revenue report for May twenty twenty four, Ms. Fiona.
May chair of commissioners.
Morning.
May revenue report for February business, the gross receipts for the month of May came at five point eight million, which is about ten point seven million yearly increase for last year. Oil and gas receipts for the month came in at seven point two million, which was mostly production related, which was based on February production of twenty three point seven million barrels at seventy five dollars a barrel.
What's the, what's the one at right now?
Eighty, eighty three seventy five.
And actually, we already kind of pulled the numbers for June, and production's like at twenty five million, it was one of the higher months.
For a motion to approve the revenue report for May twenty twenty four?
Shall we?
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote. Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Renova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next, we have budget versus actual May revenue and expenses.
Uh, for May budget versus actuals, our budget revenue for the year is two hundred and sixty-three million. Actual revenue came in at three hundred and seventy-nine million, we're at a hundred and forty-four percent collected with one month's delay. Um, without the transfers involved, we're at a hundred and sixty-eight percent collected. Uh, budget expenses is two hundred and ninety-eight million, actual expenses are two hundred and twelve million. Uh, we're about seventy-one percent spent. Without all the transfers, we're at fifty-eight percent spent. Um, general, general fund, I'll just touch on real quick, the revenue is a hundred and seventy-nine percent collected, and the general fund expenses are seventy-two percent spent.
Sounds great. For a motion to approve the budget versus actuals, May revenue expenses report?
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Renova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Next, we have fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five interim budget with adjustment from DFA.
Oh, shoot. I was gonna catch you in. We had to make a last minute adjustment to the interim budget that you guys approved, um, kind of oversight is of my part. We had entered the, um, LEPIF grant, right, the.
The law enforcement protection fund, which the sheriff's office received, and this was already after we had submitted the budget into the state system. They sent it back to us, letting us know that we needed to make this adjustment.
And it's a three thousand dollar difference. We had entered at two hundred thousand, it came in at one ninety-seven, so it's just adjusting all the numbers for that and getting your approval for that. Updating the resolution.
Questions? For a motion to approve fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-five interim budget with the adjustment from DFA. Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Renova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Next, we have budget adjustment for Pecos Valley Drug Task Force building. Mr. Bruce.
Chairman. Um, we're coming in this morning, we've, uh, we've received bids in for the Drug Task Force building. Um, they've come in at a little higher than what we were anticipating, which is understandable considering the building that we designed. Um, we've sat down with the contractor that brought us the, the lowest bid, and reviewed the bids with them, and the architect that we have onboard, and, um, feel that it's appropriate. We, we reviewed it for some value engineering, and made sure it kind of makes sense. Which it does, the building that they've designed is a very well-designed building, and that will be a, a benefit to the task force for several years to come. So we're not just throwing this together, it's gonna actually be something that they can utilize and, um, be a benefit for them for, for time to come. Um, and then we've discussed it with county manager, and it's, with, with this being a local contractor that brought us the bid, and the availability to do it now, this is something we don't need to wait on any longer than we need to kick off and get it going. So, this budget adjustment is for the building and for all the surrounding site work and everything else needs to go into, so sure that it should cover.
What's the timeframe on completion from when you get started?
So, from when you get started, they're waiting on your vote today, and you also have a corresponding contract with, uh, in your agenda package, your consent agenda, and we put a hundred and eighty days on them, which is gonna have them done with, by the end of the year.
Do we have, do we have a construction schedule with milestones on it?
We will, as soon as you approve it.
Any questions? I will look for a motion to approve the budget adjustment for Pecos Valley Drug Task Force.
Shall move.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Renova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next, we have our resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Is there anything that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Let's go over closer. We will look for a motion to approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented.
Will move.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Renova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Next is travel request consent agenda.
Anything that we want to discuss further? Questions? I look for a motion to approve the travel request consent agenda. Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Renova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you. We do not have any emergency business today. Do not have any legislative comments? We'll move into elected official department conference announcements.
Chairman Commissioners, how are you this morning?
Wonderful.
Uh, I'm, at our NMC conference, uh, we rewarded the rap program awarded him, so I'm presenting that to the Commissioners. Also, I wanted to let you know, we're coming into our new fiscal year, and our, um, insurance with the state has increased. Uh, they've given us a ten percent increase, but with that, we, uh, give our employees a fifty thousand dollar life insurance policy that the county pays for. And we have never participated in the, uh, the, uh, line of duty, the twenty-five thousand that we can pay for our, uh, sheriffs, our fire, uh, and the detention officers. And so the heartburn in their, uh, quote, RFPs this year, has included that in our costs uh, for, uh, the life insurance that we offer our employees. So, we have now added them, uh, to the twenty-five K, uh, line of duty insurance. So our, um, security personnel staff has the extra additional twenty-five thousand dollars for life insurance. Uh, the other thing I wanted to let you know is we are going to do a job fair in August, on August twenty-first. Uh, our fire services department has graciously, um, let us use their facilities. Uh, we're gonna put it on the, um, radios, uh, and advertise it out. Uh, we're gonna do some hot dogs. Uh, we've asked all of our departments to come and participate so that we can kind of do an outreach to the community, uh, let them know. We've done here at the clerk's office over here, but we're gonna go out to the fire and rescue department. Public Works is gonna bring some equipment, and Fire Services is gonna let us have some equipment, and Anna has talked with the Sheriff's Department, uh, and they're going to bring some stuff out there, and just do a community-wide job fair that we have, and then those that don't have positions in their departments, just let them be out there, and let them talk, and let them, uh, let the community know what they do in our departments, and just do some, uh, public uh, awareness for the county. So I just wanted to let you know that. Is there anything that I can answer for you at this time? No?
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just, uh, wanted to come up and give an update on the, um, hazard mitigation plan that has been in the works for a long time now. It finally did get FEMA, so I'll be bringing that next meeting. Um, Carlsbad and Artesia will also have to adopt it, um, as a resolution, and, um, those will be on, in Carlsbad, it'll be adopted on the ninth, um, before city council, and then in Artesia on the twenty-third, and I'll bring it here on the sixteenth, so. It's been something that has been worked on for a long time, and we're happy to see it, and, you know, pretty good. Um, and then I just wanted to say thank you to, um, City of Carlsbad, Mayor Lopez, um, Wendy Austin and her staff, and United Way, Kyle Marksteiner. Um, we helped with the shelter when, um, the fire started on the seventeenth, and, um, we took most of our stuff to Chavis County and helped set up there. We had roughly between fifty and a hundred people that showed up to our shelter. Um, sad situation, but, um, they, uh, uh, we did that on the seventeenth and the eighteenth, and then, um, came back, and about midweek, uh, later in the week, they decided that they were kind of running out of room. Once the downs also got, um, evacuated, so we went ahead and set up the shelter in Artesia with, uh, Mayor Henry and Chief Hope, and, um, and then here with Mayor Lopez and his staff, so we helped, um, with that. But thanks to Chief Hope and Mayor, um, for your support, and, um, and then also to the, uh, fairgrounds up there. Dylan was awesome at opening right away and making everything available to those that were evacuated in the ambulance. Any questions?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, the, uh, sheriff's office, we provided a, uh, very large complement of deputies and even, uh, some of my lieutenants who don't get overtime volunteered to go and help out in Ruidoso, to spell the guys and gals who have been there, uh, working. We, we provided, uh, traffic control, and we provided safe insecurity of, in the areas to prevent any kind of, uh, looting or anything that, that might have gone on from some people looking to take, uh, make opportunity out of, out of tragedy. So, uh, I was very proud of that, very happy that, that we were able to do that. Sheriff Wood contacted me and was overwhelmed, uh, by our response. And, uh, that's what we do, right, as counties. So, speaking of counties, I, I've stepped down, I've been as president in Mexico counties, uh, after doing my second run, I'm not sure why I did that, but I did, um, mostly for Annie, get her ready to go as she took over as president. Um, it was really nice, uh, the, in, in Las Vegas, at our Las Vegas, Mexico, at our, uh, annual conference there, and handing the gavel over to Annie was, uh, really satisfying to see a young lady like that come up. Uh, she's the county clerk in Curry, if you didn't, don't know her. And, uh, so that, that was really nice. They presented me with an incredible turquoise bow tie, and I really, I will treasure it forever. So, that was really nice, and then, uh, I just returned back from, uh, Oklahoma City for the National Sheriff's Association Conference, where I got to take over, I took over as vice president of the National Sheriff's Association. I could do that for six months. And then, due to term limits, I, I won't quite make it all the way to the top. So, that's been kind of cool though, and, uh, I hope I represented everybody well there. I certainly, uh, made my best effort. We've got a lot going on at the sheriff's office. Uh, we just, at our staff, getting our staff found out, we are, we've got three certified officers in the pipe right now, deputies in the pipe right now. With tho- if we count those in, we're down three or four, which is amazing in, in, uh, in this climate right now that we're in. So, uh, I'm really happy about that, and that means that we're gonna be able to round out some other services that we haven't been able to, to pay a lot of attention to. Um, I'm feeling, we're playing back and all like we always do with traffic complaints, um, and the, the, the public is very good about contacting me about, hey, I got a traffic problem over here, so we run over there and we do that, and then when I get another call, we move over and we hit another area. So, uh, uh, just recently, we were out at, at, at Malaga, um, 'cause that one, that one's a, that, that's a frequent flyer for us. Uh, we're hitting at Illinois Camp Road right now. Um, we're gonna continue to keep an eye on two eighty-five. Two eighty-five's a whole lot better now that the, uh, it's been, we've got the passing lanes and all that. I guess, uh, Loving is still a disaster area because of all the road construction. I feel for them over there, it's gotta be difficult. I also want to say congratulations to, uh, retired, retired sergeant from the sheriff's office, Mike Byrd, is now the chief police of Loving, and, uh, we, we've already hit the ground running with Mike. Chief Hutchinson and I, uh, soon to be sheriff-elect, Hutchinson and I have hit the ground running, we're good friends with Mike, we've worked with him for a long time, and, uh, I, I think the village of Loving is going to be in really good hands with, with Mike Byrd. And he wants to work very closely with us, so, and we, we, and, and we do with him as well. So, I think, you know, with the fire services going on out there, I think Loving's gonna be in, it, it, it's gonna, it's gonna, we're gonna really be doing some great things to support them as a county with, uh, emergency services. So, we just got our, uh, second canine back, Karen, and she's, uh, doing, doing some good work. Kratos is still out there doing what Kratos does. Uh, you got, I think y'all got to meet Kratos. And, uh, he's with a new Hannibal now, and, uh, he's doing even bigger and better things. So, we are taking a lot of fentanyl off the streets, y'all, a lot of it, and it's not slowing down, it's getting worse. So, until something is done with our border, we're gonna continue to battle that, we're gonna continue to see Americans die. That is the focus of the National Sheriff's Association right now, is the, the border crisis that we have, and the deaths, and the poisoning of Americans. So, I just want y'all to keep that in mind, uh, when it comes to anything to do with the drug task force. I'm gonna keep my comments very brief about that, but they need to be supported, and we need to support them. They're, they are our biggest line of defense against people dying from federal poisoning. So, I'll leave it at that. I appreciate all the things that y'all do for the community. You may not get to hear that enough, I know I don't get to hear it enough as an elected official. Um, usually, we usually get the compliance right, so, uh, I thank y'all, I appreciate y'all, I appreciate what you're doing, and the sheriff's office appreciates your support. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, I.
Have you got, I've been hearing a lot about this, right? I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's like a compound with fentanyl.
Yes.
Kind of not responding to, like, and have you seen anything like that?
We haven't seen a lot of it yet. We anticipate seeing it, um, because it's just a more effective way to kill Americans, so of course we're gonna see it. And, yeah, yeah, it's, it's basically, if, if y'all aren't familiar with it, it, it counteracts Narcan. Narcan can revive people that have, uh, fentanyl lacerizing. It's, it's unbelievable, so. Yeah, God bless people who came up with that, right?
I know, I'm like, why?
I, I, I don't, well, I can tell you this, and, uh, I've, I've spoken with my son, who works at the, at the Carlsbad Police Department, he's lieutenant on patrol, working in the evenings a lot, and he said, you know, these people get mad at him. Him and his, his officer, when they administer the Narcan because they think they've ruined their high, it's like, you, you were dead, you were gonna die. Well, you ruined my high. It, it's, it's, I, it, it's, I can't comprehend it, I really can't. Where we've gone with this as a society, and why we're, why we're allowing this. Because it is, it's not overdose, it's poisoning. We are poisoning. Americans are being poisoned by this stuff. And I can't speak enough about it, I, I get on my soapbox every chance I get and talk about it, because it's just, it's unbelievable. It, it's, it's touched everybody in some way, shape, or form, and if it hadn't, it would. I promise you. Your family, your loved ones will be affected by it in some way, shape, or form, because it, it, the numbers are accurate. The numbers are astronomical, and they. Because it, the numbers are bigger, the numbers are astronomical, and they they are, it's, it's exponentially growing, the problem. So I I don't know, we 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 got, we gotta make some changes. And I guarantee you, and anybody can put their head in the sand, say whatever they want, on whatever side of the political fence you're on, that border down there is the problem. That is the largest part of the problem. And of course, Americans' appetite for Narcan. But if you seal that border, you get a handle on that, you'll see far less Americans dying from fentanyl poisoning, I promise you. We have the numbers to support that.
If I can ask you another question about fentanyl, when you said you're taking a lot off the streets, I know the last time you talked about it, it was pills to power. Are you seeing more pills or is it still an even mix of?
No, it's mostly pills. It it it, it is mostly pills. That's the big thing, and we're seeing folks using up to twenty pills a day. If they're building immunity, so.
What does that mean, I guess, and and somebody that doesn't speak your language, it, cause you were saying pounds of powder, right? Which you could make millions of pills out of that. If you're seeing more pills, is that because they're coming across the border in the pill form now, because we're tired of dealing with the powder over here, or?
Yeah, it's. Yes, it's it's more economical for the cartels to move the pills twice the powder, cause they can, they can, the pills are not pure fentanyl. If they were, it'd be like, you take one pill and kill all the cartels, just. But what they're doing, they're pilling up the 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 powder that they're getting from China with pill presses that the Chinese are providing them with. And that's how they make an even bigger profit is by, it's like with any, any dope, you're gonna step on it, you're gonna put additives to it, to dilute it a little bit. First off, so that, you know, you can make more money, and second off, I mean, well, it just makes no, it 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 makes no sense to just give, just pass through pure powder. And they're gonna step on that some one way or the other, they're not gonna, because you gotta make money, they're out of that, that's, that's, the whole thing is money. That's the whole idea, is money and power. And there's a new, uh, we have a Venezuelan, we were briefed on that, uh, at the National Sheriff's Conference. There is a new Venezuelan gang that they cartel, they are working, they work with anyone, they don't care who you are. And they are vicious, they're brutal, and they are here. And it it's just, it's getting worse because we're not doing anything to stop them. We're doing nothing, nothing to stop these cartels, they have free rein. You have an open border, you got free rein. People are blind to that, they're blind to that, I'm sorry, I don't know what to tell them. But yeah, this Venezuelan cartel, and I I don't even have the their name memorized yet, I have it written down, so I've gotta do some more research on it. But they briefed us on that, and they said, this this is even more dangerous than any Mexican cartel, because they work with all the Mexican cartels, all of them. And they are, they're ruthless, completely ruthless.
And this is a question I feel very confident of the answer to myself, but anybody that listened to the debate, the big discussion on what was coming across is we're gonna put these new machines that catch the fentanyl. Those machines are only at border checkpoints, exactly.
Yes, that's absolutely right. And that's a big talking point that I've I've heard utilized by some of our our people in Washington, and they they really latched on to that. And they said, you know what, almost like ninety percent of the illicit drugs are being seized at the border. Oh, no kidding? They're being seized at the border checkpoints, because that's where, that's the only place that you can catch them is at the, at the checkpoints. Do you think they're using the checkpoints? No, look at the footage that's all over the internet of these people, men, men mostly, of military age, a lot of them wearing camouflage, some of them armed, openly armed, crossing the border with backpacks on. What's in those backpacks? It's not cat food? It's dope? That's that's exactly what it is. So yeah, sure, the the majority of the illicit drugs being seized are being seized at border patrol checkpoints. Yes, we know that, that makes sense, but how much is coming around the border patrol checkpoints? They don't wanna talk about it, that's not good narrative, that's not good narrative. But guess what, we're seeing it. If they're so good at getting it all at the border patrol checkpoints, why are we taking so much off the streets? That's what I want to know.
And I think that's what bothered me, that was the discussion that's been a discussion for a lot of our congressional delegates, uh, over making the border checks better. And my point to her was the same one you just made, well, have you watched Fox News, cause I know maybe not someone else might be showing it, but.
It's exactly.
It's like it's coming around everywhere else.
She and I have gone back and forth about that, and if, I, I appreciate her, cause she'll at least talk to you.
Sure.
But she's wrong. What she's being told is wrong, and I wish that she would look around that, but she's not.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, just a quick, uh, few little heads ups. The Corales intersection is going, they paved the detour yesterday and they're about to close that off. So we will have traffic going down Commerce as of probably this morning, even because people don't obey traffic control. So there's people going down Commerce this morning, they're gonna close that off and they're gonna tear up that intersection, do the curb paving, they're gonna get that in hopefully in about the next couple of weeks. The other one is Longhorn Road, we had our kickoff coordination meeting on Longhorn Road yesterday. It is going to be a challenge, and just reason for the heads up, and we're gonna put the PSAs out, and we're gonna do the information. It's gonna be a battle down there with traffic. And as I've stated before, our priority is our people down there working, and if we have to close that road off in sections, we're gonna do it to keep our people safe. So if you get the calls, you'll understand kind of what we're dealing with, we're going to try to run a flag truck and run them around where we're working. If that becomes a problem, especially when we get to chip seal, we're gonna close the road off in sections, is what our current plan is. Yes, sir. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, if you get the phone calls, that's what it's gonna be, and we're gonna try to get in and out of there as quick as we can. But we're doing thirteen miles of road that's really gonna help the industry down there. And we're, we're planning on building it up just like we did McDonald's. It's, we drove yesterday, it is a rough booger, it's a rough booger. So we're gonna build that deal up and and get it right, make sure it drains, and we're gonna chip seal it, and then we're gonna come in and micro it and have that cape seal on it. And I think that'll really hold it up all the way down there for the industry. So just heads up. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, so I just have a couple of updates. The first one is fireworks, we don't have any bans or restrictions in the county at this time. Same as always, we just ask everybody to use caution. Our preference is you go and enjoy the show in Carlsbad or Artisia. We will be notating fires caused by fireworks, so next meeting Jared can give you an update on how many we had. So far, we've had two, they've both been in the northern part of the county, so I just encourage people to monitor your teenage children and make sure that they're safe with them and with you when they set them off. We do have new deputy chief, David Watson, he'll stand up, just so you all are aware of who he is. David has over twenty years of experience, a career in volunteer, he's transitioned through the rank over the years. And for us, he's been a shift battalion chief, division chief of training, and now he'll be into that also. We also filled our fire and life safety specialist with Trinidad and Karoska training, was a volunteer for us for years. He was one of the original twenty-one hired, and he brings a diverse bilingual ability to that position. So he's working on getting some certifications that he can use to finish it up, and then he's gonna start implementing some plans to put together some more things like the smoke detector and fire sensor events that we do. So his primary focus is how do we prevent having those calls, so. We also got the three new lieutenants filled with some good candidates who demonstrate good ability to lead, so that gives a supervisor at every station now, which will help a ton. The sheriff understands that part. Currently, we're onboarding four new personnel, two of those are paramedics, two are uncertified, so they'll have to go through an academy. That leaves us down four still, but we do have seven applicants, so I feel like we can fill those four positions fairly quickly. We'll test on the fifth and the nineteenth. The next meeting, Jared and Watson will bring approval to apply for the state fire fund grant. And I will not be here, I'll be in Aurora, Colorado at the Fire Chief Summit, so if for some reason y'all need anything, I'll be available via cell phone. Hopefully we can get you guys to pack it, everything ahead of time, and I'll answer any questions you have, so. I'll stand for any questions they all may have for us.
Everybody's got three dozen?
Yeah, they all came back, they were there twenty-four hours or so, so, nonstop, they came home too. So it's getting pretty bad up there, and then we have Swiftwater text that we've notified Jen that we can, we're on standby for that as well, so. Obviously, one problem leads to another problem, which will lead to more problems, I'm sure, for them, so. We just pray that it all clears up, things get better, and so. Only thing I do wanna do is I wanna give HR a shout out, they've done a great job keeping up with us. I would say I'm probably the most demanding department head, but I don't know, I I like to keep our process moving as fast as we can, I know the others are the same way, but sometimes I push a little hard. But I do appreciate them, they've done a great job, so. Good, Jen, thank y'all.
Thank you. Any others? For County Manager Clemens, first welcome Deputy Chief Watson, it's good to have you, congratulations. Uh, we see one employee come off, and we see another one go away, it's sad to see Brianna, she's gonna be leaving us here July tenth, so good luck to you and everything moving forward and your adventures.
Did I interrupt that?
I wanted to say congratulations to all Eddie County employees for the Rappel Award that was received at NMC. Um, I know HR does a really good job of pushing that program, I know a lot of employees, you know, half of us complain about it sometimes, but it's a really good, um, program, and it does really affect our insurance, and we do a really good job. So thank you to all Eddie County employees for participating in that. Um, I also wanted to say thank you to all of our Eddie County employees, elected officials, our sheriff's departments, emergency management, fire service, who helped out with all the fires. Um, and just our community in general, Artisia, Mayor Henry and Chief Hope, Mayor Lopez, Dylan Pinson, like Jen said, he was amazing, called him as soon as it happened. He opened up everything right away at the fairgrounds, the sheriff's posse was amazing. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who participated, it just shows how great of employees we have and great of a community we have that come together to help in others' needs, so thank you to everyone. And just following that, I just wanna say thank you to not only all the department's elected officials, department heads, but also to our employees, you know. We never give them specifically a shout out, but just to let them know, we see your hard work, we know what you're doing, we appreciate it, and I just wanted to say that out loud, because I know we always say thank you to all of our department heads. But really, those employees in the background, they work really hard, and man, we have some really great employees out there, so thank you to everyone out there. Lastly, just happy Fourth of July, stay safe and enjoy your time off. That's all I have.
I just stole my thunder.
Sorry.
Couldn't call the people that volunteered to fight the fire, from law enforcement, and I mean, I mean, Carlsbad. Eddie County really jumped in pretty fit on all that, and I'm sure it was, it was much needed. One thing about Dylan, I was gonna try to get in on the first aid for all horses coming down. We need a big shout out to Chevron, who immediately furnished a full rail wagon, about ten thousand dollars worth of aid for all horses in the area that came down. So once again, thank you to the oil company, Chevron, and the sheriff's team that come through for us. Just a little bit back to the, to the POTUS deal, uh, I'm pretty much in favor, like I said, I think everybody has some good ideas. If we're gonna build a building, maybe we can do something to expand on the existing center or build it into footprint. Pretty obvious to try to build something exact is not gonna work, so I'm in favor of doing something, I'm just walking away. That.
Commissioner Henry?
I'm adding everything, you know, between fire services, I know we've, and we've all had a hard job as well, because when they were coming back, a lot of folks wanted to get where they needed to go, and it's a stressful situation. So I appreciate everybody that was out there, either fighting it or helping residents try to get back where they need to be. And and again, all the surrounding communities, just show us how great we are, why this this size of state, and I shouldn't say just this size of state, state generals can jump together. I live on this side, so we see what we do, and super proud of everyone, I mean, Carlsbad, Artisia, you jump over the other side of Mount Almond Gordo, did the same thing. I mean, a lot of folks pitched in and made sure that, uh, those folks were taking care of the best of their ability in a stressful situation. I will continue to to remind that it's definitely not over for them, I mean, I understand the fires are in a lot better shape, kind of controlled them, I don't think they're a hundred percent contained, which is shocking with the amount of rain, but, you know, they still have a lot more work to do. But, um, I've got quite a few folks out there that have been calling me, and they're pretty stressed, cause they're business owners, they're they're different kind of, uh, what I think, I lost the word, anyway. Work within the community, and they're devastated, and they're gonna be devastated for a long time, they're really worried, how do they keep their businesses open, how do they do this, how do they do? And so we need to keep them in our prayers for a long time, but we also need to continue to remember, it's not over for them, even when the fires are out and the flooding stops, they have a long, long road to go. And we need to continue to be there for them and continue to help where we can, so I would just continue to remind people of that for sure. And I think we will, we'll do a great job of that, as we always do. Everything else, have a great Fourth of July, it's one of my absolute favorite holidays, I love celebrating freedom, I try to do it every day. But that's a day we get to shoot things in the sky, to celebrate even more. But please be careful, I mean, everything that we're seeing around here, everything that has happened, um, be careful of all the fires, but then also be conscious of what's happening. Already my phone's getting a little, little crazy, or shoot them, uh, one, uh, come on, I mean, be reasonable, try to remember everyone out there loves fireworks, but they don't love them all night, all day. So think about your neighbors, think about everyone else around your area, but please, please be careful, let's not, let's not get anything going down there as fast as we can. Other than that, thanks to everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson?
And I, and I agree with what Commissioner Henry had said, let's be cognizant of all those people around us. I know that, uh, last year, when the fireworks started going off, uh, I, some of my, uh, neighbors had some people over there shooting fireworks, and all of a sudden, I started having fireworks land in my backyard. And up on top of my shop, and it's kind of disconcerting, you know, it makes you wanna go get some fireworks and shoot back. But you can't really do that, but, uh, but.
As long as it's only fireworks.
Yeah. You know, but it does, it it does, it creates a problem, and and, you know, there was one of them that was still on fire and landed in my backyard. Luckily, nothing happened, but it could have been, but my dogs did run out there and grab it up, you know, which probably wasn't a good deal. And so we appreciate people just being, uh, having, you know, just consideration for what they're doing. Also, I'm kinda looking in with Steve on some things about, um, these trash containers, uncontained, that are are blowing around, the trash blowing around. And so I'm kinda looking into, I think that that's an important area where we have the growth that we're having now. I think that that's a problem area where we have the growth that we're having out in my area. And, and we don't have other buildings to knock the wind off. And so, when they set out the trash containers, when they're not set in a contained area, then they're blowing over and trash is blowing out. Containers are blowing out in the middle of the street, roads and stuff. And so, uh, that's kind of concerning to me. And so, I'm looking at it with, um, Steve Makroski. Just want everybody to be safe and have a great, uh, Fourth of July. We are celebrating the independence of our nation. And so, uh, it's a great time. And we just want people to live in a nation that's, that is free. And we wanna always keep it free.
Um, wanna congratulate the county, as we've already said, on their RAC award and just thank everybody for their hard work that they do every single day. Again, wanna thank everyone who was involved in assisting Rioso and that continues to be involved in that. I was thinking this morning about how many people from our, you know, county and community would travel to Rioso for the Fourth of July. And I'm sure it's very sad for them up there. And so, I, you know, I am thinking of them. That also, uh, brings me to think about like our animals, our four-year-old dogs and stuff on the Fourth of July. Make sure you secure them and keep them in a safe place during fireworks show. Remember, people are gonna be out and about and little kids everywhere. So, just be mindful of that and be safe. And, um, I just wish everybody a very happy holiday here. And I hope you enjoy your time with your family. And, um, that's all I have.
I wanna start by thanking the residents of Otis that I had the conversations with about the Otis jail. And, um, I think that our, the commission's decision today in trying to have a good plan going forward is all that they've been asking for. So, I'm glad to see that we are able to work alongside them. It's kinda frightening that the National Sheriff's Association's biggest concern is fentanyl on the border. And we are right here at the, the front of it. So, I'm thankful to have a task force that is, as, i- i- is as big of a group of go-getters as they are. Um, we're very fortunate to have them here. And I do appreciate everything that they do. Thank you to emergency services, fire department, the sheriff's department, um, for sending people to help create those response. And to every other person within the county that played a role in being a good community member and assisting them. That's super important. Like Commissioner Henry said, this is something that isn't over. There's decades worth of devastation. And with the flooding and everything else that's going on, there's going to be a lot of recovery. So, as community members of the county, let's all do what we can to support our, our family and make it county real, so. Fourth of July is my absolute favorite holiday. It's the best time to be in Carlsbad. Sorry to teach you, but Carlsbad's a lot better. You can be better at football than other sports, but nobody does the Fourth of July like Carlsbad. And, and if there's, sorry. There, there's, there's no, no rivalry. But, uh, I'm very, really, I'm very proud to be from Carlsbad this time of year, the amount of flags, the amount of participation. Everybody truly seems to be very patriotic and I really appreciate that. It's the best time of year. Be safe. Everybody come back with all of their fingers next week. So, I'm kind of joking. And just enjoy the, enjoy the holiday. That's all I have to say.